Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, May 16, 2022. I would ask that you all, uh, call the meeting order, ask that you all please rise for an invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we gather here, we are ever mindful of the many challenges and problems that are facing our world. We are ever thankful that in Batavia, we continue to do all we can to maintain a very peaceful and loving and supportive community. And we know that the heart of Batavia is always seemingly in the right place to help those who are experiencing difficulties or in troubling time. Um, I am aware that we have young men and women from our community who are now involved in the situations over in the Ukraine and Poland, and I just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those other men and women from our country who are defending liberties over there with them. Tonight, we just ask for understanding envisioned by the city council and that we go about the items before us, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each alderman, we are here to do what we feel is in the very best interest of Batavia. Uh, we also ask for a special blessing on all those in our community who are sick or infirm and are dealing with COVID. And again, we just ask for a blessing that they recuperate their health and come back and are contributing citizens of Batavia like they have been previously. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Connolly, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Connolly.
Here.
Janzett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Thirteen of fourteen present, Your Honor.
The record reflects thirteen of fourteen are present for the meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item number four on our agenda, which is the chair's reminder to everyone to please speak into the microphones that are before you or at the podium, given the fact that this meeting is being recorded and will be replayed on a number of occasions on BATV. Uh, moving to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Anybody from, uh, committee got anything? All right, uh, moving then to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Janzett, are you on with us?
Indeed. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the committee the whole minutes for April 12, 2022, January, February, and March 2022, City Council financial reports, the building reports for April, uh, 2022. For approvals, the May 13, 2022 payroll in the amount of $965,097.11. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,416,940.49. Ordinance 22-24, conditional use permit for a drive-through restaurant, Mocha Coffee, 132 Independence Drive, Miller Coffee Property LLC applicant. Resolution 22-54-R, approving a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for space on the water tower located at 1392 West Main Street for the installation of an antenna facilities. Resolution 22-55-R, approving equipment shelter lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for shelter located at 1392 West Main Street. Uh, Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Malley, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk called the roll.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience? All right, I received a email today from Alderman Connolly, and I think he makes a very good point here. Uh, yesterday was Peace Officers Memorial Day, which kicks off National Police Week, which runs this year from May 15 to May 21. And, uh, I would just like to add some comments to that, and I know Alderman Connolly would like to also speak. Uh, I, I have the sense that the law enforcement agencies that are around us and protecting us, and particularly those in the city of Batavia, are probably facing now some of the greatest and most complex challenges that we've ever seen in the history of Batavia and the history of our world. Uh, I am just knocked away by what I'm being shared with on a daily basis by the Batavia Police Department of the types of things that we're having to deal with. The amount of criminal activity that's occurring on the technology field is just awestruck. Uh, we constantly are having people be having money taken from them. Uh, con games are being played with them, identities are being stolen. Uh, it's a real moving target on the computer these days, and I, I feel bad about it, but I'm also comforted by the fact that we have very technically astute people at the Batavia Police Department who are spending night and day, in some instances, working with this type of activity. So I think we're trying to stay ahead of it. I also have been very pleased with the, the idea that was brought forth by Chief Uer when he first took over of creating a higher visibility Batavia Police Department. And if you notice, our police cars really stand out. I mean, you, you're gonna have to really close your eyes and hide your head if you don't realize that that's a police car coming at you, just given the size of the lettering on it. And I think that speaks wonders for probably discouraging some of the bad guys who stray into town and see all those cars floating around. Uh, we're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to let you know that you come in here and think you're gonna pull something. Uh, the Batavia Police are gonna be on it. And I think the greatest value or attribute that we have going for us in Batavia right now is the quality of the officers, the men and women that are being hired to be Batavia Police Officers. And, uh, to some credit, this goes to the Batavia Fire and Police Commission, which the members of the city council point every, I think it's every two or three years, one of them is up for reappointment. We have three, uh, and all of them are people that have previous city relationship. Uh, we have a former alderman, we have a former policeman, and we have a former fireman. And so they know the business, and, uh, they really take it very seriously. And I think the high quality of candidate that we're able to attract in Batavia speaks well for what the reputation of the Batavia Fire and Police Departments are. And we just are, I think, doing everything the right way here. So as a council, I would hope that you would understand that, you know, sometimes we have to maybe spend a little bit more or do something, but all that money, to my mind, is well spent because we really do have people around us. And I've had the police tell me that some people have described us, specifically Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, as a great shopping center of affluence, that any house you were to go to try to break into or rob or package you'd steal off the front steps or whatever, there's probably some value in it. It's not a bunch of junk, it's, it's good stuff. So one of the things we have to do here is maintain this high profile. If anybody comes in here and starts following around, following around the Amazon truck or the UPS truck, uh, we take notice of that and probably bring them down and see what's really going on here because it's some of those folks that are coming in here wanting to do that, to see the size of the package and making the decision, "Well, let's run up and grab that one." So, uh, we, we really do have some new challenges that, you know, when I started here many years ago as the mayor of this town, what I've just talked about, these weren't crimes that were being committed because the world hadn't changed that much to allow those things to unfold about, about us. But unfortunately, they have, and, uh, we're gonna do everything we can to keep Batavia peaceful and caring and safe community for us to live in. So Alderman Connolly, would you like to say something?
Uh, just very briefly, um, just for those of you that don't know, National Police Week, uh, pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who were seriously injured or killed in the line of duty. Um, on average, 163 police officers are killed each year. Um, and last year, a record number of law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty. Um, as Mayor Shilky stated, you know, we're blessed to have an outstanding and dedicated police department. Um, and I think just during National Police Week, it'd be a good time to acknowledge the great job the men and women of the Batavia Police Department do for our community, and also just to acknowledge publicly our continued commitment to protect the safety of the members of the Batavia Police Department in any way that we can.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council want to offer any comments? Well, I think it's been said, but I, I'm very pleased that we can sit here and at this portion of the meeting and have such nice things to say and with such pride about the Batavia Police Department because I, they truly do their job and they do it in a very good way. And we are very fortunate to have these men and women in our community who do this 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and they never, because of the nature of their work, can we ever take a break. We can't have a shift not come in. So we have to, that's one of, it's like the fire department. They always have to come because there's gonna be times during any time of the year, night and day, that people are gonna need them. So we are very, very fortunate. Oh, all right, moving then to item number eight, which is appointment, in that I'm honored tonight to appoint Deputy Fire Chief Craig Moved by Alderman Wolf.
Second.
Second by Alderman Miller. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Very good. Chief Hansen, congratulations, you're now on the hook here. The tones will be coming.
Got a new truck and got a new title.
All right, moving to item number nine, which is the annual department head reappointment. And those are, City Administrator Laura Newman, department heads, somebody was gonna give me a list of this, and all we got is titles here. We got, I got the same thing here. Okay, we do have it, it's, we got it. City Administrator Laura Newman, Finance Director and Budget Officer Peggy Colby, Fire Chief Craig Hansen, Police Chief Dan Yule, Public Works Director Gary Holm, City Engineer Rahat Bari, Human Relations Director Wendy Benaric, Information Systems Director Howard Chason, Community and Economic Director Scott Buning, Street Department Superintendent Bill Kellum, Public Properties and Services Superintendent Scott Haynes, Water Department Superintendent Jeremy Barkey, Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent Zach Bonzes, Manager of the Electric Operations Mustafa, I never can say his last name, Kovadik, ESDA Coordinator, Fire Chief Hansen, ESDA Manager Mark Davis, and City Attorney Kevin Drundo, or his related appointee to service on, as we have tonight in the city attorney's place. So those are the nominations I'd ask for motion and confirmation.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, and second by Alderman Sulfah. Clerk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item 10, which is approval of a Class C-1 carry-in restaurant liquor license application for Happy Tummies LLC doing business as Dai Village located at 4 North Batavia Avenue. This has been to committee, and we've been approved, so somebody care to make a motion?
Yes, Mike Rizzato, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rizzato, second by Malay for the approval of the Class C-1 carry-in restaurant liquor license, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, item 11, which is approval of Class F Special Event Liquor License for Batavia Main Street for the Cocktails in the Park event at Appleton Park on July 23rd, 2022. Who's got this one?
Yes, I do, your honor.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, this is a one-day temporary outdoor Class F liquor license for cocktails in the park by Batavia Main Street. It's a yearly event that we have, and that has been very successful. Everything's been checked out, and we just need to approve it.
Somebody care?
Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Saron, second by Alderman Malay for the approval of the Class F Special Event Liquor License, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item 12, which is proclamation for National Gun Violence Day. Who's got this one?
Your honor, I do.
Go ahead.
Your honor, our proclamation, whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities, and whereas cities across the nation, including Batavia, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. Whereas, and whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange on June 3rd, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, declare Friday, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value our human lives. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor. Your honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf. Do we have anybody that wants to address this? I think we have one here. Would you give the council your name?
Sure. Hello, Steve McHugh. The co-lead for Kenton Kendall County Moms Demand Action for Gun Safety in America. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the proclamation and raising awareness for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Every day, 420 Americans are shot, 106 of them die every day. Firearms are the leading cause of childhood deaths, children aged 1 to 19. It took over the number-one position from car accidents. Car accidents was number-one for the past 100 years, since about the 1930s. So it goes firearms now, car accidents, poisoning, cancer, and COVID. So I ask you to do everything in your power to promote gun safety, gun storage, safe storage, secure storage, and to reduce hatred in general and domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now that ESDA clerk to call the roll on the proclamation, please.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. I've got this proclamation here, do you want, would you like to take it with you and? All right, now for some interesting positive community news. We have item 13, which is presentation by the Batavia Parks Foundation on the Peace on Earth Campaign and the Play It Forward promotion. Britta McKenna, Britta.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and Laura, for putting me on the agenda. Hello and happy spring from the Batavia Parks Foundation. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share details about our exciting Peace on Earth partnership with Batavia's barbapeneur, Craig Fultos, in making our Peace on Earth letters a permanent, year-round work of art on our bicycle pedestrian bridge. Since this may be the first time many of you have heard of this initiative, let me review the history of the project and hit the highlights for you. The project dates back to 2008, when Craig Fultos and his merry band of tonsorial parlor volunteers cut and painted letters to be placed on the bridge. The 12-foot letters for peace and earth and eight-foot letters for on are hung annually just before Thanksgiving by a team of Batavia Park District's parks employees, taking eight hours to hang and then taken down at the end of January. In April of 2011, the Batavia Park Board officially named our downtown bicycle pedestrian bridge the Peace Bridge. Lighting was added above each letter in 2015 so the message could shine brightly at night as well. Now, in 2022, with the combination of the wooden letters showing their age and the current state of, well, the world, Craig's vision expanded to make new letters and lighting for a permanent display that becomes art year-round and a message of peace from Batavia to the world. As only Craig can do, he again started grassroots fundraising in 2021 through his shop selling Peace on Earth sweatshirts, raising $4,000 towards the permanent art project. The Batavia Parks Foundation partnered with Craig this April to infuse fundraising and awareness horsepower and kicked off our Peace on Earth campaign on May 7th. The goal is to raise at least $50,000 from our community and also write grants to match donations. To date, we've raised $16,540, so are at 33% already. You probably have lots of questions, and I certainly don't have all the answers yet, but here are some I know you are thinking to get us started. One, the project will match the size, font, and color of the current white block capital letters. Two, the letters are likely to be made out of a lightweight metal like aluminum. Three, we will be adding electric drops and a more permanent LED lighting display above each letter that will have the added capability of changing colors for holidays, green for St. Patrick's, red for homecoming, et cetera. The Park District will control lights via a Wi-Fi, likely with an astronomical clock that will turn on just before sunset and can be programmed to turn off at sunrise or any time earlier. Four, the cost of the project is estimated to be between $50,000 and $100,000. We are still getting input on the design, getting bids on parts of the work, and finding the best way to install and maintain the project. Five, we are also being mindful of bird and fish migration and are researching these to reduce or eliminate impact. We will have the ability to shut off the lights during specific dates and times if needed. Six, our target installation date is just before the 2023 holiday season. This date is, of course, is contingent on funds raised and availability of products after we order them. So how are we going to raise the funds? Good question. Through a combination of sponsorships, donations, grants, and a raffle. We have already secured letter sponsors, just launched our Play It Forward raffle and save ticket. Each ticket, like I have here, is $20, or three for $50, with all funds going towards the project. There are 10 unique prizes, from an e-bike from Boji Bikes to a five-course wine dinner for 10 at the soon-to-be-open Miras Restaurant, more fun from a family quarry pass packages and a new comedy vault, and soon-to-open sturdy shelter brewing private party for 15 from our play partners. Each ticket also has a save side with offers from our sponsors, so driving business back to the sponsors. Boji Bikes is offering $10 off an e-bike rental, or you could get a buy-one-get-one free kayak down at the pond. Use all offers and you can save over $50 just for supporting peace on earth. So where can you buy your ticket? Because it is gambling, a raffle, you have to buy them from the committee members. So buy them from a Parks Foundation board member, or you can go buy one from Craig. At Fultos, he happens to be at 7 East Wilson Street. He's there a lot. You'll also see the Parks Foundation pop-ups at Wednesday River Rhapsody Concerts, Batavia Farmers Market on June 11th, Windmill City Fest, and New Pints by the Pond on September 24th, where we will pull 10 lucky raffle winners. At your places, you've got a card that looks like this, and all you need to do is take your smartphone and shoot the QR code. There you go. Alan Wolf has already got it up. It'll bring up our Rally Up platform where you can donate or you can purchase a raffle ticket online. If you're interested and you want to write a check, those are good, too, just drop it off at the Civic Center or put it in the mail to 327 West Wilson Street at the Park District, and I'll pick it up. If you're looking to give a major gift of $1,000 or more, contact me at brittawmckenna@gmail.com. Let's all pitch in to make peace on earth, year-round art, and a message of hope from Batavia to the world. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, Jennifer?
Are you able to accept electronic payments in any form?
What kind?
Electronic?
Elect-
Like through Venmo, PayPal, or anything like that?
They're on the back, so if you flip it over.
For the raffle tickets?
Yes, but you need to be in person, but yes. And online is also through the Rally Up.
Okay.
You can do all that online. If it's in person, just flip it over at a pop-up, and you can use any of those at a pop-up.
Forgive me if I missed this, but how long can people buy tickets?
Up until September 24th. We'll be selling them even up at the Pints by the Pond at the Riverwalk event.
130 days, 3 hours, and 46 seconds.
That's, that's till the end of the year. I would love to be done with our fundraising by then, but that's pretty optimistic. Any other questions?
Other questions or comments?
If you buy the tickets online, how do you get the tickets? I have tickets on me, so you can always look for me. If somebody's watching TV and is doing this right now. Yep. What they want to do is pick up one of these cards at the Park District, any of our play partners, go into Craig Fultos at 7 East Wilson is probably the best bet, just because it is considered gambling, we can't, we can't have a storefront sales. And the website is a secure website, so it's secure http colon forward slash forward slash, then it's batavyparksfoundation.rallyup.com/peaceonearth. You can go to our website on the Parks Foundation, batavyparks.org as well.
Other comments or questions? I just want to make an observation. We, I think, are doing some real special things here in Batavia over the long haul, and this is certainly one of them, where we are helping to, Batavia to create a new identity of itself. And I say that because in the last six months or so, with the COVID situation that's occurred over the last almost three years now, a lot of things in Batavia were not able to be held. And one of them was Batavia High School class reunions. And so this year, we've got several of those from past years that didn't get to do stuff are kind of stopping by and talking to me among, because I guess I'm the mayor and a graduate, about, you know, maybe is there something we can do to have a class reunion? And every, this has happened twice in the last four weeks. Two different classes of people from two different classes have come in, and they're not people who live in Batavia, but they grew up here, went to high school here, and now they're back here looking at the town. And one said, Jeff, I can't believe what you've done down here as a city in this downtown. When I left here, this place was kind of a dump. Now you've made it into a beautiful garden with the river as a centerpiece. So I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. I can't believe how great this, this looks. And another one said, you know, you, you, you're creating kind of a whole new image, new ideas. You've got these boardwalk shops over here, you've got the River Street on Saturday mornings, you've got all these new things happening. They're redoing the Batavia High School football field out there now to make it bigger and more friendly and more lit, and, you know, we're just constantly showing our pride in Batavia. And this bridge and those letters stand out very, very strongly. And I think it was driven home to me very vividly, so two weeks ago Saturday night, when we had the Batavia High School prom. And there, I don't know how many went, there was, I would describe it as several hundred between about four o'clock and six o'clock, all came down here, all dressed up in tuxedos and fancy dresses, and they seemed to go to two places. One, they went to the Depot Pond, and they stood right at the top of it, and everybody, mom and dad and grandma and grandpa, everybody had their camera, and they took pictures of everybody standing in front of the pond with the water in the background. Then the second place, many of them didn't drive, they just walked over to the Wilson Street Bridge, on the north side of the bridge, they stopped and stopped and had the picture taken with peace on earth in the background. Those were the two photo centers for the Batavia High School prom this year. I was very pleased to see it because it illustrated to me that this truly is, in the sense of the heart and the mind and the pride of the people, that, you know, it's something that gives you proud to say you're from Batavia and you want to express it. And I had two mothers tell me as they're walking back after taking the pictures, well, this makes up the Christmas card for this coming year. So, I mean, it's just those types of things that we're doing with this thing. So, you know, heaven help the guy that comes in here and says, well, I want to run for office, but I want to take those letters off that bridge, or I want to fill in the Depot Pond, because I'll tell you, there's a lot of fans to both of those out here in this town right now. So thank you, Britta, for what you're doing and what your committee's doing, because I think you're really kind of locking this thing down as a piece of pride for Batavia to have for years to come.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
All right. I guess we don't need a motion on any of that. Okay, going to fourteen is a presentation by the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence Alumni Network, and Marge Brown is here. And she fits into what I was just talking about.
We have a little PowerPoint presentation. My name is Marge Brown, and this is-
Mariah Harden.
And we want to thank you, Mayor, City Council, for sharing your evening with us tonight. So we've got some information about Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence. So we are going to speak about our brand-new alumni, can you hear me okay? Alumni online community. But first, we want to give you a little bit of background about the organization that is partnering with the school district to bring BHS alumni and community members together. Mariah and I are both members of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence. Some of you probably already know about our organization. We're also known as BFEE, B-F-E-E, which is the shortened version for Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence. It was established in 1985 under Superintendent Dr. Stephanie Marshall. It was the sixth school district in the state of Illinois to form such a foundation. The foundation is a not-for-profit organization with the goal of supporting the Batavia Public School District, its teachers, and students. BFEE has a volunteer board of directors comprised of private local citizens. We work directly with BPS 101 to further the education of its students. We award grants each spring which carry out our mission, which is Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence will be a partner with our schools and community, fostering innovation and expanding opportunities to ensure BPS 101 students are always learning and always growing. The grants can be initiated by faculty, students, administrative personnel, parents, and other citizens or community organizations. Applications and criteria are found on our website. This spring, we had the pleasure of awarding $23,000 in grants to benefit the students and community of BPS 101. These projects will greatly enhance the learning environment in our schools and community. There are many ways in which you can support BFEE, through Amazon Smile, corporate matching, direct donations in the KCT Affinity Batavia Bulldog Heart. More info is available at our website, bataviefoundation.org. As part of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence's efforts to form greater connections with our graduates and the community, we are thrilled to launch the Bulldog Nation Alumni and Friends online community.
The Bulldog Nation is the first alumni community for those who have attended or taught in Batavia. Our committee has been working hard to create a place for alumni and friends at BPS 101 to get together and give back to their schools. On our website, we feature a directory, so people have the opportunity to find and reconnect with those long-lost classmates, stories about cool things our alumni are doing in their post-grad lives, and news about Batavia schools and teachers, so everyone can stay up to date on upcoming events, and more information about how to give back, whether that is monetarily or otherwise. We hope as our community grows, we can develop a robust and diverse group that can donate and support and mentor current BPS 101 students. We use several different methods of engaging and reaching alumni. First, through social media. The BFEE Facebook page often shares posts aimed at grabbing the attention of alumni and getting them to think about their time at BPS 101. For example, on the screen, you'll see a post where we asked alumni to shout out their graduation year in the comments, thus grabbing the attention of their friends and hopefully popping up on other people's Facebook pages. In another, we asked former students to share memories of their favorite teachers. In addition to Facebook, we are currently using Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn to find and connect with those alumni. Social media is fast and easy, but not everyone can be found online, so we have different methods to reach those people as well. In 2022, we have plans to attend community events such as the Batavia Farmers Market and BHS Homecoming Events. There we'll be spreading the word and signing people right on site with our laptops. In addition, we have featured articles and advertisements in local publications such as the Batavian Magazine. Our community is new and still growing, and we need your help to get to our maximum potential. If you scan the QR code on the screen or go to the links, you'll be taken directly to the Bulldog Nation website, where you can sign up to join. And although this is an alumni community, we don't need you to be one to join. If you're a teacher, a parent, a supportive community member, we would love for you to join as well. Lastly, we need you to spread the word. Tell your friends, family, post the link on your own social media accounts, so we can get this community growing. Bulldog pride is strong, and we know we can really build a giant support for all the current BPS 101 students and staff.
We have a little handout here, if you want to ask around. There's a QR code down there that tells you about our meeting and websites, so we can find us. So we're very excited about this, because there is no alumni association up until now. So we're just starting this from the ground up. We need all the help we can get to get it out there. It's free to join, and so we'd like to encourage you, as maybe BHS alumni, Eleanor, and anybody else, and also just friends of the community, you know, it'll keep you involved with different alumni stories of what they've done, and we've found some interesting things about some of our alumni, so. And if you have news about any of the alumni that you would like us to spotlight, please let us know, and you can reach us at the website there, or, you know, just call in. Mariah, so. Does anybody have any questions about anything?
Any questions? Keep up the good work. I think there's a lot to be gained after this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, fifteen, do we have somebody that can do a presentation from Batavia Main Street?
Yes, I'm Bill McGrail, Vice President of Batavia Main Street. I'm filling in for Beth, who is actually at our National Main Street Conference this week. So I'd like to fill you in on some of the exciting things that are coming up. First things, the kiosk project, which is part of the new downtown directory. The first two kiosks have been installed. You've probably seen them, there's one right outside the chamber, and then one right outside City Hall. The remaining three are going to be installed by June. And right now, those are empty, but the new downtown directory is pretty close to being complete, too. And those will be in the kiosks. And then there also will be ones that'll go inside stores that people can rip off and take with them, a nice little map on the front, and then a directory of all the businesses on the back. If you've been on River Street, you've probably noticed the Main Street shed is near finished. We wanted to say thank you to the city and also to the high school building trades for partnering to help make this project possible. It's going to be an area store, a lot of the different things with Farmers Market, as well as a partnership place for other downtown and Batavia foundations. Farm Dog Flowers opened on April 30th, and they have been very, very happy with the support that they receive from the community so far. Market calendars for this Friday, the third season of the boardwalk shops will start. If you're able to, please get out there and support the new businesses. They're all ready and excited, and should be another fun season. And the following weekend, May 28th, we're going to have the 27th season of the Farmers Market opening up. We'll have an average of 50 vendors per week, up from five from last year. And the artisan collective is going to return on the third Saturdays of the month from June throughout October. On May 28th, we'll also have the Well Batavia Festival at the Pigbon Center. It'll include free health screenings, a variety of local health and wellness vendors distributing information, and much more. And finally, on, on June 1st, we're going to have a combination of cocktails and the park dinner table tickets being sold. Actually, I apologize, it's going to be on May 31st at a cost of $125 for both. Individual events will go on sale on June 1st, so it'll be a pre-sale if you want to buy both events. Cocktails, tickets are 40 in advance, and then $45 at the door day of. And then the dinner table tickets are $85 per person. We also need volunteers for both events, so if you're interested and able, please visit our website, downtownbatavia.com, and there's a volunteer tab to see all the different opportunities. Thank you.
Any questions on Main Street?
I have one question. Bill, what was the date for Well Batavia, one more time?
Oh, yeah, that is May 28th.
Thank you.
Same day as the Farmers Market opening.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming down and getting on board here and giving us your report. Appreciate it very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, moving to sixteen, a motion approving the sale of excess land at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a piece of property that we have at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street, and we went out, we opened the bid at the committee hall meeting on April 26th, and that was the, one bid was $5,000 from Batavia Buildings LLC, 16 East Wilson, and so we're accepting that bid to approve the sale for that tonight. Anybody have any questions? And I'll make the motion that we approve that sale.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Wolfe, for the approval of the sale of the property at the corner of West Wilson and Batavia Avenue. Do we have any comments, questions about it?
One less piece of property that we own and another piece of property on the tax roll. Not very big, but it's one we don't have to worry about.
I guess not. I've asked the clerk to call the roll.
Wolfe.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Thirteen, fourteen, yes, no, 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 absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to item seventeen, which is ordinance 22-25, amending the zoning code, City Code Title 10, Chapter 4, regarding electronic changeable message signs. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. This is one of the things we've been doing on updating some of the zoning codes, and this one had to do with electronic changeable message signs. We did have some discussion over that over a couple of different meetings and settled on the changes that are in there. The, almost all the same things that we had had in the draft ordinance that we started with are in it. We did change the timing. Didn't hear what we ended up with on that. Somebody help me with what the timing was.
Yeah, the 15 seconds is what the change, change time was established.
Okay. So we settled on 15 seconds on it. That was one of the things that we went back and forth on. And then that we also will allow these signs in the industrial area, and it's mainly for, try to help employment issues for businesses out there.
Geographically, we just confine it to areas north of Wilson Street and east of Washington.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody have any questions? Any comments? And I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-25, amending zoning code, City Code Title 10, Chapter 4.4, regarding electronic changeable message signs, for our sign company applicant.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 22-25, amending the zoning code for Code Title 10, Chapter 4, regarding electronic changeable message signs. Any other?
Yeah, I just voted no, because I, you know, there's enough distracted driving going on right now, and these things, they do distract. And it's, I feel for the businesses that want to try and attract people in different ways for employment or whatever they're trying to do to drive business, but I just think these in general are a bad idea, wish we didn't have them at all.
Anybody else? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Wolfe.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
No.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Twelve, yes, two, no, no, absent.
Okay, vote is 12, yes, two, no, none, absent, so the ordinance 22-25 is approved. Okay, moving to item 18, which is ordinance 22-26, amending the zoning code, City of Batavia, Title 10, Chapters 2.1, 2.1, 2.6, 4.1, and 4.2, and 4.4, and City of Batavia is the applicant. Who's got this? Alderman Wolfe?
I do, Your Honor. And this is a change in the zoning code for garage. And also, the amendment that were presented when we discussed this at the COW, the only two things that we did remove from that was the two issues regarding rooming houses, and that we still allow those in, or we will allow those in single-family zoning districts, and that parking requirements would be eliminated. And one of the things that we're also going to do with this is we're going to follow up with community development over the next year to see how this in real-world application goes, and see if we do have any issues with it, if we need to revisit it. Anybody else have any comments? Now I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-26, amending the city zoning code, City Code Title 10, Chapters 2.1, 2.6, 4.1, 4.2, 4.4, and 6, and the City of Batavia applicant.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 22-26, amending the zoning code as stated. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Wolfe.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Thirteen, fourteen, yes, no, 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 absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to nineteen, which is Resolution 22-056-R, adding a second deputy chief position to the Batavia Fire Department. Who's got this one to present?
I do, Your Honor. As, as we learned in committee, with the change in chiefs, staff reviewed the structure for the department and determined that it would be more advantageous to have two deputy chiefs serving under with- to have two, uh, deputy chiefs, uh, serving under with the workload, uh, that is available. Uh, as we are learning committee, this is, uh, not an inexpensive proposition, but the efficiencies that are gained, uh, are definitely well worth it. Uh, so with that, I would move that we approve the new structure for the department.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Lehman, for the approval of ordinance Resolution 22-056-R, adding the second deputy chief position to the Batavia Fire Department. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I, I think that this has been, you know, an interesting time for the city over the last decade or so. We've gone through some changes in, in both the fire department and in the police department, and I think we, we've recognized and realized that what has worked in the fire department, or worked in the police department, we'd like to apply to the fire department in having two second-in-command, uh, positions. And I think it, it, the, the amount of administrative work that we see that happens in each one of those departments really demands to have that extra personnel, um, to be able to manage the department, um, to handle all the scheduling, all the, the grant writing, the specs that they have to come up with every time they get a new fire truck, everything that they have to go through. And I think the, the way the departments were set up and the way that they've evolved to now, I think this is a good step forward for the fire department to have that, um, in, in moving forward, and I think it also makes the department a stronger department by having that extra personnel, um, and being able to have interchangeability between those positions, whether you have one focus on administration and the other one focus on operation, um, similar to what it is in the police department. I think it's really important that, you know, we state, we take this step forward, and I know it's not a cheap step, um, but I think it's a definitely a necessary step for this department to keep moving in the, in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
14 yes, no no's?
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, and an absent. Okay, moving to 20, the administrator's report. Laura, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, tonight, we had the, um, appointment of all of the, the officials for the city and also, um, appointment of our new fire chief, um, at a date in the very near future when we have also filled the positions of the two deputy chiefs. Um, there will be the official oath of office that will be taken by the chief and the deputy chiefs, allowing this to be celebrated with all of the members of our Batavia Fire Department. I also wanted to say that, um, unfortunately, with regard to appointments, this will be the last time we will be appointing Dan Yule, Dan Yule, to be our, uh, police chief. Um, Dan has announced that, uh, with, at his anniversary date in September, he will be, uh, retiring. Um, I cannot say enough about the excellent, um, way in which Dan has carried out the duties of police chief, and I, I won't be able to say enough about it now, but come September, I think we will have a great opportunity to celebrate the magnificent career that he has had here. Um, with the announcement of Chief Yule's retirement, we were able to conduct a, um, internal, um, application process, which resulted in a successful candidate for, uh, that the mayor intends to appoint upon Chief Yule's, uh, retirement in September, and that is Deputy Chief Sean Maza. And so, uh, come September, we will also be, um, seeking that appointment as well as oath of office for the next, uh, chief of police for the City of Batavia, Sean Maza. Uh, last Friday, I and a few of you also attended a crosstown ride that was organized by the Batavia Parks Foundation, thank you, Britta, and then also our, uh, Batavia Bicycle Commission. Uh, the ride started here at City Hall and proceeded up Houston Street to, uh, Van Norwick and over to McKee Street. Um, from there, we traveled to Deer Path Road and took McKee, Deer Path Road over to Main Street, and then headed back downtown. Um, and throughout this, this ride, there were, um, areas in which we stopped to discuss some of the difficulties that exist to try to traverse, in particular, the west side of the City of Batavia. Um, and many of the issues that were highlighted, um, we're very grateful that as part of the city's strategic plan, that we have the active transportation plan that we are, uh, currently working on, we expect that a lot of, uh, we'll see some of the recommendations for improving those difficult areas, uh, will be part of the priorities that come out of that active transportation plan. So we continue to work on that. Right now, the Active Transportation Alliance of Chicago is meeting with, um, constituent groups, the Fox Valley Special, uh, Recreation, as well as, uh, a number of senior communities within the City of Batavia, and collecting their information, um, to, uh, come up with the list of recommendations. So we expect that in perhaps a month's time, that we'll be coming back to you with, uh, a status on where that project stands. Uh, just today, we received great news that the Batavia Historical Society has received, um, a grant for the historical marker project that the mayor has, on a couple of occasions, told us about, where we will be, um, creating various points of interest in our downtown and near downtown of amazing historical events that have occurred in our city, both to educate residents, but also visitors to our community. And we also intend to have, um, some type of application that goes along with those historical markers, so that people can take a tour of our lovely city from the perspective of visiting those historical sites. Our PPS crews are very busy, putting all of the beautiful flowers and plants in our, in our planters throughout downtown, and also the, uh, hanging flower baskets are expected to arrive this week as well, which have really become very much a signature of driving down Wilson Street and seeing the overflowing, uh, pink baskets of flowers. We also, um, intend to put out, forbid our, uh, entryway signage. We wanna do two signs this year, um, both of them at the north and south entrances into our downtown area, um, on Route 31. And on May 18th, the plant commission will be, uh, considering, uh, an application from Bell Tire. That would be the, uh, third entity that will be located on the former Avenue Chevrolet site, along with the Chipotle and the Starbucks, so that will be a Bell Tire. And we've also, uh, received plans for the interior renovations at Imagine Theaters. This is the, uh, theater organization that has taken over the Randall 15 Theaters, and they, uh, are, wanna go full speed ahead and have that theater open by the holiday season this year. And that's all I have, unless, uh, anybody has any questions for me. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions tomorrow?
Anyone online? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, committee reports, community development, Alderman Wolf?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Public Utilities?
Yes, uh, just a reminder, tomorrow before the COW, uh, Aries invited us for a, uh, tour of the wastewater treatment plant at 5:30. Like this meeting here, your honor. And that's all I need to report.
Okay, Government Services?
Uh, no reports, Your Honor.
Am I forgetting somebody?
City Service.
City Services.
Yes, nothing to report at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. Have other business from the council? All right, uh, going to the mayor's report, I just have a couple of brief comments to make. Number one is, I just wanna remind everyone that we're gonna have quite a historic moment in Batavia on June 14th, which is American Flag Day, because on that day, we're going to break ground for a Flag Day memorial that's gonna be right here next to the Peg Bon Center. Uh, a lot of money has been donated, lots of money has been donated to help build that. I'm very impressed by the volume of money that they've been able to pull together, and I think it's gonna be a first-class operation when it's there. Uh, it will pay tribute to the fact that one of those who fought very hard to get the US Congress in 1916 to adopt American Flag Day was Dr. Bernard Sagrant, who lived down in the 1100 block of South Batavia Avenue, and, uh, he was a real patriot and fought for many years on it. He also got involved in the campaign to have the Star Spangled Banner named as the National Anthem, and he was fighting that battle when they, what happened, so we're told in history was, in 1916, World War I was about to break out, and Woodrow Wilson was looking for some ideas to bring patriotism to the forefront of the American public. And this idea of having Flag Day being June 14th, when Betsy Ross supposedly brought the flag into the Continental Congress, played right into the hands, and so we tried to exercise this. And so it began then, and it's been held ever since then. And after many years, it wasn't, I believe, till about 1949, that the US Congress, this has always been done by presidential proclamation, but the US Congress finally adopted it, as they did, I think in 1934, changed the Star Spangled Banner to the National Anthem. And, uh, so those folks that were kind of involved in that conversation at the national level, several of them were, were Dr. Sagrant's group. And, uh, one very interesting correlation that occurred in Batavia on June 14th, 1916, was is that at the Batavia High School that year, there was a freshman class, and in that freshman class, there were two girls. One of them's name was Beth Sagrant, and she was the father of Dr. Sagrant, and, you know, had a lot of this kind of hanging around her. The other one was a girl by the name of Marion Moon, and she was the daughter of the Methodist minister who ran the Batavia, was the minister for the Batavia Methodist Church. And, uh, the two of them were there together in the same class. You come up to my office, I have the class picture hanging in my office, and I'm working on a little brochure that hopefully we'll be able to give away on the 14th, telling the story of Beth Sagrant and Marion Moon being in the same class, because Marion, or Beth Sagrant's father was successful in getting the Flag Day thing going, and Marion Moon ends up being the mother of Buzz Aldrin, who put the first American flag on the moon. So you talk about some very steep and historically connected American, uh, connections. Uh, I don't know if it can get any deeper than that, that you got two girls going to Batavia High School, who are gonna come out of families that have this connection to the American flag situation. So I, I, you know, that, that is something that we should be bragging about. And, uh, one of the things that the Historical Society, and as has been mentioned, I was involved in this with the Dunham Foundation to get this. This may be the first to hopefully what could be several grants, because we've got some very unique places we're gonna put signs up. One of the signs, I will tell you, I think is gonna be right outside this door, and the sign's gonna say out this door that in this room where we sit and have the city council meeting in about 1967, 68, this was a research laboratory for a company by the name of, of, uh, DK Aerospace, and they were a division of, of the company that was in there, Dunbar Capital. And Dunbar Capital made a lot of machinery revolving around loading things onto ships, and they made conveyor belts, and they made the, the belts that dumped all the grain onto a ship and took it off of a ship and whatever, so they had tremendous experience with rubber products. So in this room, in their laboratory, they started playing around with rubber products at the request of the US Space Program at that time, and so Les Hodge, who was the plant manager, told me on several occasions, none other than Warner Von Braun, who was credited with doing the American space landing on the moon, came here to this room and sat several times for multiple hours, pulling on this rubber and trying to break it and change it and see, they'd, they'd made this, what they called the flexible fuel line, and at the end of the day, that was the fuel line that was put in the rocket that went to the moon. So the, the fuel line that was in the rocket that landed on the moon was made in our room right here. Interesting, nobody, you know, that's a pretty interesting thing to be able to brag about. Then, right down at the end of the street here, right across the street from the waste, our new wastewater treatment plant, there was a foundry, well-respected foundry, it was in Batavia from 1872 to about 2003, called Shumways Foundry. Some of you who are old-time Batavians may remember it. Shumways Foundry, for about a 30-year run, made the mold casting that produced the Academy Award. And so every Academy Award had to be put in one of these molds, and then it was poured by a foundry up in Crystal Lake, but the actual mold was made in Batavia. So we made the mold for the Academy Award. And then, uh, another kind of interesting one is out on Walnut Street, right where Alderman Wolf made a big presentation a number of years ago to put a sidewalk on the old railroad right of way, uh, and you got that successfully approved, as you may remember, and it goes from Main Street down to Augustus and School, and there, I see a lot of kids using it, so I think it's a safe way for a lot of those kids in the southeast town to go. But that sidewalk right of way that Alderman Wolf got this approved on, ends up being a former railroad right of way that ran from the northwestern line in Geneva down to the Burlington line in Aurora. And they had a sidetrack right there about the 700 block of Walnut Street, because there was a great, big greenhouse there called the Psychora Greenhouse. And Mr. Psychora was recognized as a national expert in the production of roses. And so, for a number of years, he grew roses and roses and roses down there, they would load them onto railroad cars on the sidetrack, then take them down the railroad right of way where the kids now walk to Augustus and School, and they took them to California, and those were the roses in the Rose Bowl parade. So those were made in Batavia. So, you know, that with Mary Todd Lincoln's connection over at Bellevue in 1874, where she was there for four months. We've got more action-packed American history of a national note than probably any other town around here. And, uh, I think I've, many of you heard me tell this story, I had Brad Stevens here, who was the mayor of Rosemont, and Brad Stevens donated a lot of the money to the Batavia High School Bulldog Boosters, thanks to Ramblin' Ray Stevens, who was, got, uh, Brad Stevens to do it, they're not related, but Ramblin' Ray's over in Rosemont as the master of ceremonies for community events, and they were trying to raise the money for the turf grass at Batavia High School. So, I would tell you, I don't know the exact number, but, uh, Brad Stevens probably gave Ray Stevens maybe $200,000 worth of tickets to the Rosemont Arena, that he went on the radio, 'cause he had a radio program, and he auctioned off, including the Stevens's private skybox that he got thousands of dollars for from dads that wanted to have a nice place for their daughter's 21st birthday party or whatever have you. And so, all that money was raised, and so, the day that we had the groundbreaking, I asked the folks at the high school, would it be okay if I invited Mayor Stevens out here, since he had donated? Oh, absolutely. So Mayor Stevens came out here, and he met me out at the East Side Fire Station, we were a little bit early, so he says, "Show me this town." So I take him down Wilson Street to Prairie, and I turn around, and I go back out east, and I stop in front of 713 East Wilson Street, and I say, "Well, Mayor, this little house over here, this was where Sherri Meyer lived, and when she was in Batavia, that's her name, but she later changed her name to Jackie D. Shannon. She wrote the songs 'Put a Little Love in Your Heart,' 'What the World Needs Now Is Love,' and she was the opening act for the Beatles' first tour of America in 1964. And she won the Grammy Award in 1987." So then I drive down the, down the street a couple more blocks, and I pull into Dazzle's Auto Repair Shop there, and I say, "In this parking lot in 1974, 20th Century Fox came to Batavia, and they made scenes from the movie Harry and Tono starring Art Carney. And it was a story of this old gentleman who got evicted from his apartment in New York City, so he took his cad, whose name was Tonto, and they made a cross-country trip, and the movie's about the cross-country trip, and one of the scenes, they, he pulls up in a car he's been hitchhiking in, and he gets out and he walks onto what today's Dazzle's storage area out there, and he buys a Chevrolet car. So at the end of the day, Art Carney, who was the star in the movie, won the Academy Award for Best Actor for his portrayals in that movie. So I got, I got the Grammy Award and the Academy Award out there on East Wilson Street. But then if I continue to go another five blocks to the east, I can pull into the Speedway Gas Station parking lot, and I can point to the, the clump of trees that's there on the southeast corner of Redan- who was the star in the movie, won the Academy Award for Best Actor for his portrayals in that movie. So I got, I got the Grammy Award and the Academy Award out there on East Wilson Street. But then if I continue to go another five blocks to the east, I can pull into the Speedway Gas Station parking lot, and I can point to the, the clump of trees that's there on the southeast corner of Redant, or no, Wilson and Kirk Road. And back in that tree is about five hundred feet is what they called the Phillips Farm, and the Phillips were folks that lived out there until Fermilab arrived, and they had a very, very nice house back there. So when their house got bought as part of the Fermilab acquisitions, uh, Fermilab decided this was a nice enough house that they were going to let the executive director of Fermilab, whoever he or she is, live in this house. Well, in nineteen eighty-nine, Leon Letterman, who was the director of Fermilab, won the Nobel Prize for Science. So out on East Wilson Street in Batavia, we have the Grammy Award, we have the Academy Award, and we have the Nobel Prize. And I get through showing all this to Mayor Stevens from Rosemont, and Mayor Stevens says to me, "Well, Jeff, you know what I got in Rosemont, but on a historical perspective, you got me beat." So, I mean, I share all that in all truth. I mean, it's, it's very interesting his- history that the community has, and I've had other mayors in here, and I've taken them on this trip, and they, everybody just shakes their head that, "I don't have nothing like this in my town." So, we really do have some stuff there that we're gonna sign up here pretty quick and let everybody know. And one of the ideas is, is that we'll probably make some type of a technological program to go along with the signs, so somebody in wherever can look at the sign we've got put up, and then they can read about what happened as a result of this, you know, during the sign. Should be a good thing, too, for kids in school in Batavia to be having access to all this information. So, we've got a number of other locations that we're talking out at the Historical Society about what should or should not be in the sign program, but I think we're ready to go. Uh, I've got about the copy for about, I don't know, twenty or thirty signs ready to submit, and we're still trying to talk about who we're gonna have make them and what, what they're going to be, but I think we're pretty close to making the final decision on that, too. So, uh, I just want you to know, uh, between June fourteenth and the Fourth of July, which, uh, this year, we're gonna have the big Batavia program, and we've got a new sign out that we're wanting to buy, help people to buy for twenty-five dollars, and then all the money goes to help buy the fireworks. And Mark Davis, who's at the very back of the room back there, is our fireworks chairman, and addition to being our ESDA guy. And, uh, we're selling the signs now, and if you want to buy one, they're available up in utility billing, they're twenty-five dollars, but they're a full-color sign showing, you know, support Batavia's Fourth of July fireworks program. And it's interesting, there's a number of people now that are collecting Batavia signs. And I have been in several garages, that's where they all seem to end up, and there's just walls of these signs. And it, when, if you may remember, we had the infamous referendum battle about Batavia being home rule or not, and we had a sign made for that. And there's a lot of people prominently showing that sign off, and I'm sure this Fourth of July sign, and then everybody likes that sign we put out about, "Slow down Batavia," or whatever it is to get people to slow down in the, and Laura, you're still, are we still gonna have a, some kind of a slow-down sign here pretty? Yeah, that's coming. I just wanted to let everybody know, we're gonna have a slow-down, I don't know, we don't, not, we're not ready to say what the words are yet, right? So anyway, that's coming, so everybody can be ready if you get asked that. These are very prominent Batavia questions. And if I'm out here walking around in the weekend, which I seem to be doing a lot, man, I get a lot of this about this type of stuff. And I have people tell me, "Jeff, that's, this is what makes this place a nice place to live. You've got fun stuff, it's not controversial, it's not political, it's not any crazy thing that you're trying to get anybody to charge off on a political stage or whatever. This is just nice stuff about the town." And as Britta presented earlier, I mean, this Peace on Earth sign is a classic example of, of that type of sentiment that's rolling through Batavia. So, uh, we really do have, I think, a community sentiment here that really speaks well for people being pleased with the town and supportive of it, and understanding it, and appreciating its history. And so, we've really got a lot to be proud of here, and as members of the city council, I hope you share with me your appreciation for the good effort that so many people are making to bring Batavia into a very special place in the face of the earth. So, with that, uh, I entertain a motion for adjournment.